I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome. We have no scheduled visitors. Is that correct? No scheduled visitors. Moving on to the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All three steps?
Sure.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Were there any additions or corrections to any one of the three?
I have to say, I was very impressed. I actually read them carefully, looking for something. It was good.
Okay, there being no corrections. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Does anyone have any questions on the warrants that were circulated?
No.
Nope, looks great. Thank you very much. Are there any citizen comments not related to the agenda from anyone who might be out here? Thank you all for joining us tonight. Great, we'll keep moving forward.
Why don't you introduce Morgan?
Oh, that's true. That's great, thank you. Morgan, if you don't mind, I'll put you on the spot and introduce you. Morgan Kittredge is our newly appointed, as of February 28th at 4:31 PM, city clerk. Thank you very much, and welcome. Anyone want to say any words of encouragement to Morgan?
She's got a lot of comments.
There we go, perfect.
Joan does a lot of comments.
I did a lot of it, and she will too.
Great. Thank you, Morgan, and welcome.
Hopefully, you're going to be here for 41 years.
I started a little bit later than Joan.
Oh, okay.
Well, welcome. Item number five is the cancellation of the public hearing regarding our charter change amendment. And we had a hearing scheduled for this evening that we have since canceled. And I believe that's about all we have to say on that issue. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's really it.
Perfect. Moving on to business. Item A, land records archive filming.
Yeah, so this is something Joan brought to my attention. It's a quote to scan in 39,000 documents that are in our vault. I have a couple of questions about what's included in this. It's $7,000 to scan in 39,000 documents, just for the record. I have a couple of questions about what that includes, because I need...
No, sorry, just a minute. The outside door, the...
It is closed.
Do you still hear them like that?
Yeah.
The other ear was open.
Anyway, I just want to make sure that when we scan in 39,000 documents, that they're indexed the right way, because that's another dubious task, is sorting 39,000 scans. But we do have the funds on the next page in your packet.
Wasn't there a budget item for sorting somehow? I don't know how this actually works, but I was curious.
So we have $30,000 for records restoration, and $57,000 for records computerization. And now, those funds have come from our deed filings. When someone comes and files a deed for 15 bucks, or whatever the fee may be, some of that money gets put into records restoration, some to computerization line items. So that's an accumulation over the years. So we have the money to do it. I just want to be smart about how we go forward doing it. We definitely need to scan in all those documents.
Yeah, what it is, is we have... None of our records are scanned anywhere. And so it's just a backup. Should we have a fire? I mean, 1700s, they're still here. But it's just a safety net that's available today that wasn't back then. So this quote is for 40 years' worth. Like, when an attorney's doing a title search, they go back 40 years. This is an estimate based on the number of bucks going back 40 years in time. To do 40 years' worth will cost us $7,810. And that's just a scanning. These would be stored at the state archives, so they would be in a safe space should something happen. But the goal should be, is to scan all our records that they're showing you below. Land records, grand lists, all your vital records, everything that's in that vault.
You already have the MyLars scanned, haven't you?
Yeah, the maps.
They're all digitalized.
They are, okay.
Yes, all the MyLars are. And those get done for us. Brad Markowski scans them for us, and gives them to us. And we link them in with our grand list, anyone that files a survey here. But this isn't digitalizing our records. That's another whole step. But that's why I wanted to include in this packet the money we have aside. Everyone thinks $57,000 is a lot of money. This is just 40 years of land records, and there goes 7,800. To do the other ones that they're talking about below, like to image them, digitalize them, tilting them, that's an estimate for those 40 years of just land records. So what we do today, I gave you a copy of the new law that went into effect July 1st. We used to have those funds in existence, and then we stopped feeding them, and put all the money into the general fund. The law went into effect July 1st. You had to start putting money aside. Unless the city clerk gave a statement saying you had enough money aside, I wouldn't give that statement at this point, until you really see you're going to absorb all that money. So of every $15 that it costs someone to record a document, $11 goes into our general fund. And if you look at our recording fees, they're way up, because last year, it used to be $10 a page to record. Now it's 15. So we used to put eight into our coffers, and now we put 11. $3 goes into the computerization, and a dollar goes into the restoration. So VLCT had a notice telling you about the law change, and you needed to create these funds. Our funds have already been created, so we don't need any action. This is more just to let you know, this is what we're looking at, and we're going to be spending that money in the future, once we check out what there is, what's involved, and make a decision to go forward.
Joan, how long ago did you stop funding those two years?
I would say two, two years at most.
Okay, I didn't know we did that.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, I mean, it seems to me like the index searching and having everything be searchable, that is... That should be the main goal here.
That's what we want it to all do. And like with our digitalizing, we want it to be tied to our grand list, and that mapping that you were looking at.
Yeah, inevitably, it should be... We should... The goal should probably be to get everything tied to a parcel number, because that's the unique identifier for land. And if you can have deeds tied to a parcel number... I'm still, you know, and Morgan and I, we talked about this a little bit today. We're going to think of the smart way to go about it. I still have to have conversations with this company. It may be worth spending a little bit more, so they index it the right way.
And is this the only company around that does this kind of work, or...
They are not the only company, no. COT system does it, the CIS system. COTS is very expensive, that's what they have in Middlebury. But they charge you an annual maintenance fee.
Description fee?
Yeah. And so we just want to meet the goal of protecting these documents without spending oodles and oodles of money.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and also not just checking the box, but also making sure that it's very actionable.
Yeah, so that it works for us.
Yeah, and going forward is a sustainable solution.
Yeah.
Is there a standard format for this digitization? Or should we digitize the records first, and then scan in the records from the past to make sure that it's all compatible?
I would prefer scanning them first, so that I know everything's protected. You can digitalize them at any time. But if you get them scanned in, then we're safe. That's my opinion.
Just creating the ultimate backup.
Yeah.
And then index them, and be able to search them, and be able to put a date down.
And every town, all the towns do it differently. A lot of them have COTS, a lot of them have a different system. Some of them, like Williston, they have them available online through a vendor, where the city would still get a dollar per page for a copy, but that vendor also collects a dollar, $1.50 a page.
But you don't have to go to City Hall to do it?
Right, yeah. And so, you know... The idea was that...
Yeah.
That if they come to City Hall, they didn't want to lose the revenue by having them available online. So that's why the vendors are starting to offer it, and they collect a fee also. But for an attorney who's coming from Williston, he doesn't want to come all the way to Virginia. He'd rather pay the fee, get it, and keep on working.
Yeah. I was surprised that they're recommending that you scan the grand lists.
Yeah, all of them. And we have every single one, except two.
And I guess I don't know. I mean, I can see maintaining them, you know, back a certain period of time, but it's not like land records or birth and death records, where you may have researchers that are going back way back. I just see no reason why somebody would want to see a grand list from 1843.
So we can establish what we were taxing, so that we can get our perimeters.
Yeah, really. I just thought that was... I guess I wouldn't make those a priority, but...
Now, do we have server space for all this? Or do we have to invest in server space?
Well, I don't even know how much it would take up. It may only be like a turret light or so. I mean, we're talking PDFs.
Right.
It's not like, like when we talk... Server space, usually, you talk about like body cams for police department. I mean, videos take up a lot. Documents, I don't think, would take up that much. But I want to talk to this company.
Yeah, she can come here. Lori can come in.
But that's what that subscription service is probably doing, is they're going to always do it in the cloud for you, and they're going to have the access, the remote access, and I mean...
Yeah.
If there's revenue generation from that, then that's interesting. But if it's just an expense, it's not as interesting.
But also, I mean, we have recently moved to the cloud, as no one knows. So I... All our... Most of our documents are in OneDrive. So we're on the cloud. We have cloud storage now, so storage isn't as much of an issue as it was as well, so...
I guess I would like it if you investigated it more.
Yeah.
And come back with some more information. It may be a recommendation, once you feel comfortable. But I think the conversation about protecting it is good, but then also, once it's digitized, how it's managed, we need to make an informed decision on how that's done.
Yeah. And they're two different things you're doing.
Yeah.
You're now wits.
Yeah.
And you need to do both.
And that might be included in that $7,800 quote. I just have to talk to the vendor and see what exactly...
Yeah, I couldn't tell either what the details were of the bid.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for following up on that, both of you. Moving on to the new job descriptions for the city treasurer, city clerk, and administrative assistant.
Yeah, so in your packets, you had the renewed job descriptions. I laid out as many responsibilities as I could lay out, that I believe happened in City Hall. Maped them all out, and then organized them based on, as a clerk function or treasurer function, and made job descriptions from that set of duties, so they don't overlap... Nothing really overlaps, and everything is encompassed. So these are the job descriptions you see before you today. Joan is the clerk slash treasurer, and as you know, Joan's leaving. And we hired Morgan as city clerk, and we will be hiring treasurer, so we're going to be separating those roles. These job descriptions do just that, and they keep, you know, Morgan, the new city clerk, really responsible for deeds and filing, which is... Taxes, which is a big task in itself. And then the treasurer can really focus on the financial aspects. Obviously, they have to work very closely together, and I include that in their duties. And, yeah, so I'm asking for approval for these job descriptions.
I read them, but I can't remember. Does the clerk's description... Is she in charge of elections, too? Is that spelled out explicitly?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
And they're both accountable to you separately?
Yes, so thank you for bringing that up. So I believe that we were under the impression that the city clerk slash treasurer reports to the council because of the way the charter was written. However, I talked to a couple lawyers over at Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and they read it differently. They say that it says that the council shall appoint those positions, the city clerk, treasurer, city manager. However, it doesn't say that that person reports to the city council. It just says they shall be appointed by the city council. In addition, the city manager job title is in Vermont statute. And in that job description, in the statute for myself, it says that department heads, you know, police, public works, city clerk, treasurer, shall report to the manager. So that... The city charter doesn't say that those positions report to the council. My job description says that those positions report to me. Therefore, to solidify it, to really draw to a conclusion, if you put it... The VLCT said if you put it in the job descriptions, that this position reports to the city manager, then this position, in fact, reports to the city manager, if that makes sense.
And that's what 6E refers to, the resolution that we're going to get to later on.
Six... Oh.
Wow, really far off. That's...
Yeah.
This is more reporting structure.
Yeah, and it seems to me that it's covered, to your point, in the different... In the responsibilities of each, of city manager, it's in your job description. And the city clerk, it is in this, it says, under direction supervision of city manager. Same with treasurer, same with administrative assistant. So it's spelled out, not only in your job description, but these job descriptions as well, which doesn't put it into a focus on whether or not we need it in the charter right now, because it's spelled out in all these other places.
I don't think... Yeah, I don't think it needs to be explicit in the charter. What's explicit is that you guys hire the city clerk and the treasurer, or appoint the city clerk and the treasurer. But as far as reporting structure, I think that language made us assume that, and me too, when I started too, I'm like, oh, these positions report to the council. No, they're just appointed by the council. They're not... They don't necessarily report. So this really, yeah.
So did Joan, and Morgan, and Abby review these job descriptions, and you guys feel comfortable with them?
I don't know what I'd be like.
I'd agree with them.
Well, what I did do, I laid out all those tasks that go on in City Hall, and I asked Melissa, Abby, and Joan to contribute to those tasks, and they added some items on there. And from there, I took those tasks, and, you know, treasurer, clerk. You know, this is a start. If there's deficiencies in these job descriptions, we can always amend them.
They're not like the charter.
So this is just... This is a foundation for me to work off of.
So we're looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion?
I think that the one thing that I'd like to note is that there is a certain level of concern, that I've heard from a few different folks in the community, relative to concern relative to growth in the administrative budget. And we haven't had that discussion. I don't pretend to know anything about anything that any of you do here in City Hall, but when members of the public bring these things to us, we ought to at least acknowledge them, and there ought to be some level of discussion. I don't know where we want to go with that.
I have had the same conversation with several people, actually. My thought was, we would talk about it when we're doing the budget.
Sure.
I would think that would be the logical time to do it.
Absolutely, please.
So I've heard similar concerns. Now, again, the structure has been Joan has been clerk and treasurer.
Understood.
Melissa has been assistant clerk, and then we've had an administrative assistant. And in reality, how City Hall has kind of functioned, Joan has taken on more treasurer responsibilities, Melissa has taken on more clerk responsibilities, and then Abby has functioned as administrative assistant. The, you know, it makes more sense to have someone specialized in the finances, someone specialized in deeds and filing, and then have an admin. And I... I'm going to have to hire somebody, but I'm thinking about hiring only part-time for now. Having a treasurer, a clerk, and a part-time admin, I think that's all we really need. I'm not looking to expand City Hall out of control, but you need those specializations in the office. And now, everyone's got to be cross-trained and work together, that's a given, but, you know, the filing of deeds and doing all the permits and stuff, and the elections, that's a big job. That's a big job. To add finances on top of that, it's too much. And, you know, we're a growing community. It's better to have those two specializations.
And you did do some analysis of the financial impact of this structure on the administration budget?
Yes, and with the salaries.
There was about a $6,000 or $10,000 cushion, wasn't there?
There is about $5,000 cushion. And next year, potentially even more, if we can have a part-time admin assistant. You don't need... Right, we don't need more than three people in this office. But I do want someone to be specialized over those two fields, finances and filing. Yes, sir.
What do you mean, we are a growing community?
We're... I mean, we're... There's expansion going on.
In terms of population, or in terms of the number of households, or...
Well, I think the census will show that we're growing. But, yeah, I mean, you got... You got different businesses that are coming in.
You have new housing going up.
Yeah, we have tons of new housing.
We have new economic corridor plan. I think growth is, I mean, it's in the plans.
But when you talk about those things, you talk about more deed filings, more, you know, parcelization, so to speak. So that's more stress on the clerk. And then, you know, if our budget, if we have more revenue, if we grow here in this office, that's more stress on the treasurer, so it's good, yeah.
Can I call a question on that motion?
Certainly. Question has been called. No further discussion. All those in favor of adopting the job descriptions as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good work.
Item C, appointment of Abby Farrar to treasurer to be effective 2/28/20 at 4:31 PM.
So Abby Farrar is our administrative assistant, as you guys all know, and she's doing a fantastic job. She does our payroll, she does accounts payable, and I believe, over the course of this year and the budget season, she's extremely familiar with our budget. She's more financially savvy than the filings. You know, I was talking about keeping filing and finances separate. She is very strong with the finances. Therefore, I'd like to appoint her to the treasurer position, effective on... Once Joan leaves. I think she's a great asset, and I want to keep her as the treasurer.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Seconded discussion.
I like her. What's her background? I've never really... I wasn't here when she was hired.
She has education in accounting.
Okay.
And she worked at a nonprofit.
Okay. I didn't really... I mean, I knew she was... She certainly seemed qualified, I just didn't know.
Well, you know, I've only been here a month, but some things in my short tenure that I've seen is her bringing to my attention IRS publications to justify why she's doing something. Like, those types of things, it's like she takes it to a higher level, so I see a lot of value in that.
Good.
Great. Any further discussion? Any more questions? Very well. All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to Abby. Item D, adopt the warning for town meeting. So I would actually like a motion and a second to begin the discussion of this. I think there is an item we may want to add. So do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. We did add, and you'll see in the warning that came in your packet, we added two questions. Article two, which is to vote by Australian ballot on the following. Shall the city council consider the option of allowing non-citizen legal residents to vote on city local ballots through an amendment to the city charter? Excuse me. We also added article three, to vote by Australian ballot on the following. Shall the city council consider the option of changing the term of office for the mayor and city councilors from two years to three years through an amendment to the city charter? We also discussed at one point adding a third question, which is, shall the city council consider the option of a local option tax through an amendment to the city charter?
I guess if we... From the last meeting, the charter's not going to happen for two years.
Correct.
And I guess if that's the case, I would think that question might be premature.
Well, it may be premature, but it may be the time to ask it, especially since we're not stopping to work on the charter. We're just delayed a little bit. Work will continue on that amendment, so...
I'm wondering how this, you know, just if you're not familiar with a local option tax, I'm wondering what, you know, as far as wording goes, to being able to... How do you briefly describe to someone who may not be familiar with a local option tax, what they're voting? I think it's pretty clear. The other ones, they seem very clear to me. I think if you're not... If you walk in the ballot booth and you don't know what a local option tax is, you may not know how to vote.
I think you need to educate people before you ask a question, and we haven't educated anybody on it.
Well, I'm not sure we've been totally educated, because we haven't... The question was, what will be taxed? And it's... And we haven't... Last time I... The last discussion we had, we did not know what that was going to be. Was it going to be fuel, home fuel, gas?
Sales, food and beverage.
Yeah, we did not decide that. So I'm not sure that we can describe what that's going to be at this point. We can say what an option tax is, but we couldn't say to the public right now what it's going to... What that option tax is going to tax.
Or what it's going to be used for.
Right.
Because that's a huge question, too.
Yeah, it has to be answered.
I think it's probably more prudent, and probably more important for us to talk about what we would do with any revenue, because particularly in light of things, the way things are headed in Montpelier, I'm thinking that a lot of people aren't going to have much of an appetite for taxes.
For the little tax.
However, that being said, if we were able to communicate, you know, very clearly, you know, what the benefit would be, that's probably... We're probably going to get more out of that. But I would agree. I mean, I think that people do need to be educated, and I think they need to understand, you know, what's the benefit to the city of Virginia. It's premature for them to figure out what the impacts are, but I think that it's worth asking.
It's easy for us to figure out what the revenue could be, based on historical patterns, but what we want to do with it, I think, is the biggest question.
Absolutely, yeah.
So when we started talking about it was going to be to fund recreational programs, the bike trail, the improvements at the park, all of those things, the rail trail, walking paths, that's when we originally started talking about this, was for recreation. Again, I don't think that discussion was ever finished. I don't think... I don't think anything passed saying, this is a good idea, and then sort of the thing went into, like, overdrive, and we gotta slow it back down and say, okay, wait a minute. So I, I'm, I'm not sure that this is the year that we ask that, we could ask, do you know? If they say no, does it, it's only a, a.
It's a question.
Question, nothing more than that. And then when we know more about it, we could put it on again in the next, with it specifically saying it would be 1% or half a percent on these things.
Sure.
For the purpose of, let's say, for right now, recreation, but.
There should be.
I, I would just hate to refer to, to, you know, for you to put on there without context, for example, a local option tax, and people say, no, I don't want, overwhelmingly vote against it, because they don't have the, the context that, you know, Lynn just pointed out.
No, I agree.
So I'm not hearing an appetite to add that question?
I think that, I think that adding it without an opportunity for it to be explained, we're probably going to get a no.
And do, how do we feel about articles two and three? Are we still okay with proceeding with those? Work will.
I think David's right, that they're, they're much clearer.
Right.
That might be a good indication as to whether we continue to pursue them or not.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting the annual city meeting warning as presented to us, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Without the LOT.
Without, without local option.
Okay, so we need to send one of these around for signatures.
Oh, mine's marked up.
Mine is red. Write your name.
Perfect. So if everyone will sign that. All right, moving forward. Adopting a resolution to declare the chain of command within the city's organizational structure. Before I read the resolution, I would like to read a statement. At our regular city council meeting on January 14th, 2020, I referred to a conversation in such a way as to imply that it was between Chief Merkel and me. It was not, and I have offered my apologies to the chief. I apologize to the members of this council for my misleading statements. This issue was precipitated by correspondence from Alderman Koenig to Chief Merkel with copies to the entire council, which involved the entire council, resulting in Chief Merkel requesting action, action by the council. Failure to act quickly and appropriately was a failure of leadership, and that failure was mine. Since that time, Deputy Mayor Donnelly, Manager Hoffman, and I have met with Chief and Mrs. Merkel for a frank, open, and honest conversation. To prevent further episodes of this nature, Deputy Mayor Donnelly is presenting a chain of command resolution outlining the procedure for communicating with city employees, and with this, we hope to put the issue to rest. Would you like to read it?
I can. A resolution to declare the chain of command within the city's organizational structure. Whereas, the city council appoints a city manager to run day-to-day operations, and whereas Title 24 VSA Section 1236 provides the manager shall supervise the, the city department heads, and whereas Title 24 VSA Section 1233 provides that the manager shall be subject to the direction and the supervision, and shall hold the office at the will of the council. And whereas, the supervision of the department heads by the manager, who is supervised by the council, forms a chain of command structure for supervision, official communications, and directives, and whereas, disrupts the chain of command structure results in problems. Now, therefore be it resolved, that all official communications from the members of the council to the department heads shall flow through and be communicated in conjunction with the manager. An individual alderman shall not send official communications to department heads, but instead, official communications shall be sent to the manager for discussion. Adopted this day, 28th day of January, 2020. I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Sure, I oppose it. I recommend you oppose it, I asked you to vote against it, seems like unnecessary structure.
Also.
I don't know, that just seems. I'm not sure, I mean, if he's already got official responsibility for whatever binding communication with employees, then I don't know why the city council would be restricted to communicating them, I'm not sure why.
Because.
It's official communication.
Official communication.
It's official communication, and that is because the council, at times, has gone aloof. And we want to rein our guys back in and say, no. It goes through Daniel, only through Daniel, and that he's responsible to all the employees.
And so official communication is, what, through a dedicated email address? Could it be a conversation you have with a fellow citizen, the sidelines of a swimming?
No, it's not official communication.
So the only official communication in it would be what?
I think personnel discussions and.
I, I think, you know, any attempt for a, an individual other than that individual's boss, which is Daniel, to attempt to direct, cause to take action, cause to not take action, reprimand, discipline, any of those things that would typically and should exist only between an employee and a supervisor, that if an elected official is attempting to do that, that's not something that any of us are comfortable with.
Well, I'm just trying to think how it would be dealt with in every circumstance, I mean, it happens all the time in workplaces, if it's somebody who does not have proper supervisory capacity with, you know, make statements or something like that, and I just.
Well, I think that, I think that, let me just offer this, that, you know, regardless of the environment, when you offer a communication, you should, you should do a few things first. You should, you should understand what the objective is. You should step back and you should say, how will this likely be received? What will the response be? And how will it further achieving the objective that I have in mind? And if it doesn't do those things, it's, it's not a good idea to send it. And that's whether it's in this realm, or the private realm, or nonprofits, or anything. And I think that what, what Lynn is attempting to do is preclude this unfortunate event from ever occurring again. If I'm correct.
You're definitely correct. And I think that emails that are sent to, to an employee that, that even implies that it's a, that it's a council decision is wrong. If you're gonna send an email, and it has anything to do with city business, it needs to go through the manager, and then the manager says, if there's a problem, I'll deal with it. It shouldn't go to anybody else. We're only, we are only officially alderman when we're in session.
And we, and, and that's not necessarily an attempt to preclude very direct communication between any of us and anyone else in the city, or the public, or anything else. It's just to clearly establish, you know, in, in this particular instance, and it's kind of like beating a dead horse at this point, you know, Chief had every, I, I mean, okay, so there's a right for anybody to communicate however they choose to, but it needed to be established that Chief also had the right to ignore it. And the, the main issue with the whole thing, and I appreciate Jeff's apology, the main issue with the whole thing, and, and a learning situation for everyone, things don't get better with time. The only thing that makes things better is direct and honest communication, and I'm trusting that that's occurred at this point. And I'll, I'll ask Jeff and Lynn and Chief for their perspective. Can, can we put the matter to bed at this point?
Well, unfortunately, Mark's not here, so I can't. It's very disappointing that he's not here.
Understood.
And.
But we don't need him here to adopt the resolution.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is, I can't say if it's resolved or not, because he's not here, so.
We, we don't, but what I don't want, you know, we, we've already, we're already at the point to where something that was relatively minor became a major issue. And I just want to make sure that, at this point, we can be done with it, rather than things festering, or coming back at it again and again and again. And I want to make sure that we're in a position to do that. And, and I appreciate Jeff's taking ownership of the situation.
One thing that I would like to say is that City Manager Hoffman has been very clear that it is his job to deal with his employees. And he feels very strongly that this chain of command is what should be followed by all of us in the future. And I would like to put the issue to bed.
Chief?
Let me just start out by saying, if anybody ever needs to reach me, I'm probably one of the easiest people to reach. I can be reached via my office phone. You can contact the dispatcher, State Police Dispatcher, which dispatches for us, either by calling the 2201 number, going to the office and hitting the buzzer, either outside or inside, which will connect us with a dispatcher, and will connect me. Or you can call me by my cellphone, or send me an email. It's a pretty simple process. And that was not done, we have no record of that happening. I have no record, the State Police has no record of that taking place, despite what was said.
And what, what specifically are you referencing?
That, what I understood in the newspaper, that Alderman Koenig had tried to reach me.
He said that in a meeting, that's recorded.
So he said that he tried to reach me. We have a security system, video system, security system, and unfortunately, the video system has a loop, and that loop is expired, so I can't verify whether he came to my office or not. But I did contact the State Police Dispatcher, the head dispatcher down Westminster, and I asked if anybody, if they had record of anybody by that name, by his name, or by his cellphone number, calling. And the answer was no. And I checked my office on all the phones, because we have phone history, and again, we have no record of him calling. That's a bit disturbing. Likewise, had Alderman Koenig, when he had a problem, contacted me before he sent that email, and talked to me, and asked me what took place, we wouldn't be having this conversation today. I deserve better than that. For 10 years, I have protected the city, and I've done the best job I can do. I may not please everybody, but I do it in the best interest of the city of Gens. Had I addressed somebody in that manner, without talking to him, without having the facts, I would expect, I would expect that I would be disciplined. And he did not give me that benefit. He fired out an email that took me by surprise, and was unwarranted. Were things that were allegations that were never true. I've never said some of the things that people are supposed to be said. So I got a problem with this, because this tells me that there's misinformation, and that bothers me. This causes some great concern for me, because I don't understand why this is coming towards me, what precipitated this, why this is focused toward me, and why it seems to be a black cloud over my department. My officers certainly don't deserve this, and I certainly don't deserve it. So if you ask me about whether this has been resolved or not, I don't know that question. I, I don't know the answer to that question, because the person that initiated that letter, that email, correction, email, to me, is not here to answer for that. This is nothing I ever wanted. I'm very proud of this city, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished here, and I just don't understand why I feel like every time I turn around, there's an attack on my department. And if you ask me if it's personal, it certainly seems like it's personal to me. There's a number of people that told me that they sound, it certainly sounds personal, and I believe that it is. I believe in dealing with people straight up, look them square in the eye, and tell them what I think, and we may not agree, but people know where I stand. I don't like confrontation, I want to do my job. That's all I ever wanted to do, is do my job as the chief of police. And this troubles me, this has caused me a lot of sleepless nights, it's upset me, it's upset my officers, it's upset my family. And I just don't understand that, so I, I don't know if it's been resolved. Believe me, I want it to be resolved. And likewise, when I, we had this conversation, Mayor, and when I sent that, that email asking for a resolution, I was ignored. I was ignored. Had I done that to somebody that posed a problem or concern to me, again, I would have been disciplined for that. And I don't understand why, I was ignored. And it seemed like it was deliberate. So, in answer to your question, Alderman Austin, I don't know if it's resolved, believe me, I want to. I want it to be that way, I want to drive on, but we're tired of looking over our shoulder. And it's, it's, it's not fair to me, as an employee of this city, to be treated in that manner. That's all I have to say.
I want to just, everyone knows how I feel about this, but I want to go on record to say, and I hope that I'm not betraying any confidence, but for the first time, we are not, we're not gonna have our policeman award night in front of the council. And it's directly attributed to this situation.
Why is that?
I, I, I'm, I'm saying this from my perspective, if Chief wants to address it. My opinion is that they don't trust us, and they have good reason not to trust us. And I'm very upset that Mark has not made the effort yet, after two months, to go and say to George, I made a mistake, and I'm sorry. That hasn't happened, I understand it's not going to happen, that's even worse. And then to, to add everything that's happened, the union, the insurance, this letter, the fact that Mark's not here tonight, I don't know how it can be resolved, because the people that are amongst us, you know, the rest of us are fighting to keep the police department in good status with us. But when there's one or two people that don't agree with that, and don't dare to address it, that's what's sad. You know, when, when this happened in Burlington, Depozel left. You know, and then the second one left. I don't know, why is he not here? I don't, I have no idea, is he sick?
He's in union negotiations with the school board.
Okay, so it needs to be resolved, between them.
I think from my perspective, I, I mean, the biggest issue that I have is, is with the timeliness or lack thereof. We, we could have and we should have addressed this right off, and the mayor has acknowledged that. Things never get better with age, other than wine.
I think at this point, though, the members that are here, and the mayor, we've done everything we can to try to resolve this. In my opinion, this is my opinion, we need to move forward. I want this to end. We don't, I don't want to talk about it anymore. I am, he is just as sick of it, hearing about it as we are. If Mark wants to approach Chief and the police department, whether they'd be welcome or not, that's up to him. But that's his decision. And I want the city to know that, and I believe that the council supports the police department 100%. So if it's different than that, you'll hear it from the different members. But we want the police department to stay together. They're, they're a great team. I think Daniel has met everyone, feels that we have a wonderful department, and when we get to budget time, we're gonna see that the police department can, can support itself. So we need to move on. And I don't think it's going to be resolved here, unfortunately. But I would like to...
Resolution is, is a good start, and I think we need to...
Move on.
And move on. I, I agree. I would support that.
Further discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you all very much. There was one additional business item, which we're actually going to throw into the city manager's report, since I did not amend the agenda when we began, which is the presentation of the audit. So if you would. It is.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, we, we just received our final variation of the audit. That's right here, so I'm gonna officially give it up to you guys, the body counsel.
Is there gonna be a quiz at the next meeting, Connaught?
There can be.
There's a trick in there, we're gonna see who finds it.
Yes.
It's a typo, it's Jeff.
Anything else to report?
So I, I sent you guys an email this morning about the HRA usage. I know Deputy Mayor Donnelly has asked about that, so I was able to pull together data of how much each department is using the HRA card. So we'll continue to monitor that on a month-by-month basis going forward. I'll present you guys with the data as we go forward to see how much is being used with the change in health insurance in the police department versus the rest of the city. In addition, I found a good vendor for a new website, possibly. And I just got a quote like an hour ago, and it's for implementing, for implementing the websites, $3,000, and then every year it'd be 1,500. This company, it's called Revise. They do thousands of municipalities. They specialize in municipal websites. They do Weathers, Weathersfield, Vermont, if you want to see what, how it looks. But I thought it would be a lot, a lot more expensive than that, so it seems pretty, pretty fair to me. But I'm still gonna, I'm gonna explore other vendors, there's a couple out there, so. But they said, if, if I pulled the trigger with them, 3,000 bucks, they'll migrate all our data onto the website and get it up and running in a week. I mean, they'll go quick, so we can potentially have a new website very soon, so.
And does that allow, excuse me, does that allow you or City Hall to make the changes on the website?
Yes, and they have, they have 24/7 support if we get lost with something, but they have really cool features, like a, um, a database for documents, you can create different forms that people can fill out, um, you know, all, all types of cool things you could put on there.
What is the company called?
Revise.
Revise.
Revise. They do Weathersfield, Vermont. Yeah, so, um, we actually encumbered money in our budget, brought over money year to year, and we were planning on doing that also this year for the website, so we were encumbering, saving the money from this budget to bring it to next year's budget for the website, because we thought it'd be expensive, which it kind of is, but 3,000 dollars is a little under what I thought it would be, so.
What do we spend now to make, what is our lineup now for less than maintenance?
Well, in, in our budget right now, we have 3,000 dollars. For our website right now, annually, we spend 200 dollars.
So we, an annual, annual increase is significant.
The annual, yeah, and then this company will, it will be 1,500 going forward, after you implement the, there's an implementation cost of transferring all the data over. After you get past that, it's 1,500 a year.
But you're gonna investigate additional options as well?
Yeah, I will. There, there, there's a bunch of them out there. These guys seem really good, though.
Look at it, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, we've gone away with 200 dollars. That's, that's, that's really, that's really cheap, but you pay for what you get.
I think that is where I want to just, if 1,500 every year, that's, you know, we're looking long-term at that, and then I want to make sure that we feel that we're getting 900 dollars more value every, every year.
Yeah, take a look at, take a look at Weathersfield and other, and other, other places Revise does, or do. They're, they're a good company. It's, yeah, I, I know that's a, um, an item that the council wanted to address.
Has the LTC looked into, into website vendors, and do they have any recommendations that they have?
I didn't ask them, I can't ask them.
I mean, they may or may not, I have no idea.
And I, I talked to someone who said that there's a vendor who does mainly Vermont municipalities. I, that, that, that person's gonna get back to me on who that vendor is. I know there's been research in the past on, but again, you know, I did a demo with this company, and they seem great, so, but, um, yeah, I'll, I'll look into it a little bit more, but hopefully I'll have, um, you know...
Well, we don't need them at the meeting, so.
Yeah, but hopefully I have a, I have a good solution lined up soon on that.
Do we have any data on how many visits our website gets? I'm just curious how frequently it's actually used.
I actually think that I have to, I have to...
I'm just...
I was on, I was on the editor, I think, the other day, and I saw, saw something about 8,000 clicks or something like that. I can let you know, but exactly, I think it does track.
Well, we should track, because to Daniel's point, you know, if we have a better website, people will use it more. So one thing that we should track to make sure that this was, you know, a good investment after year one, or whatever it is, is, is how much, not only how many people come to a website, how long they stay on it, where they go, being able to track the information of like, oh, you know, does it take them a million clicks to get to the same place? Like, we can have actionable data of how we can be better.
Uh, but also, I mean, you can use the, a website as a major tool nowadays, again, to archive all types of data. You can collect information from people in these different forms, calendars, I mean, you can, you, the, the websites they, they make nowadays are very powerful tools for, for a number of different things, so.
It's great when you can get like data online, as opposed to traveling.
Yeah, yeah, and also, I mean, like, you look at our, like, minutes and our agendas and stuff like that, it's just like text, I, you know, you can make it so, um, he, he even showed me a template where it's got like, um, you know, this me, a meeting January 1, a meeting, uh, January 10, a meeting January 20, and so on, so forth, in, in a, in a, in a column, and then the next column is the minutes, and then the next column is the agenda, and then the next column is a video link, so you can have a link for all the, just for one me, it's, it's just structured a lot nicer. There, there's, and you click on it, and it'll go straight to a PDF, I mean, it'll, there, there's a lot nicer structures out there for, for, you know, archiving, minutes, agendas, and those types of things.
Our website can be difficult to navigate.
Yeah, so again, I, I know that's been a priority, so I started to look into that.
Anything else?
No, I, I, as you mentioned, when we first started, I've been giving you guys kind of updates weekly, so this will just supplement that at the meetings.
I think that's great, though, because if somebody has a question about something, and I haven't seen you, or I haven't talked to anybody, at least I know, you know, what, what you've been doing, who you've been talking to, and I think that it's just a nice thing for us to know.
Yeah, it gets everyone on the same page, disseminates information, and, um, you know, then, then there's less surprises.
Are they publicly posted or anything, your weekly updates?
I don't pub, publicly post them, but it's...
Just, just went to us, right?
Just, just to the council, but, um, you know, it's open record.
Yeah.
Just to reply all.
Wouldn't happen.
Right, thank you. The only thing that I would like to report is that in light of our hearing last week regarding the charter amendment and our discussion regarding our boundaries, that Manager Hoffman is actually in the process of developing a plan to help us navigate our boundary discussions, and we talked about three to six months, and he believes that he'll have that planned to us prior to that, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking into how, how we can get the language in the charter the right way.
And those boundaries impact many, many things, so it's critical that we get that nailed down soon. All right, that's all I had to report.
And I'll make the motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, David, I need to talk to you.